Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the North Providence School Committee. Would you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the states of America and to the republic.
... which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First order of business is approval of minutes. Open session, regular meeting, July 22nd and special meeting on August 7th.
Move to approve the minutes of July 22nd, August 7th.
Motion by Mr. Marciano, seconded by Mrs. Picard. Any questions?
Mr. Chair, including in that motion, keep the minutes of the executive session closed.
Yeah, we're going to take that one next.
All right.
We're just going to vote on the regular meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The Chair will entertain a motion for the executive session on August 7th.
Move to approve the minutes of August 7th, executive session, and included in that is keeping the minutes closed.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Picard and Mr. Cossini. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. We have no correspondence. Norma Jean, has anyone submitted any public comments? Okay.
None.
Excuse me?
No, none.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Moving on to the consent agenda, the Chair will entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Move the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Motion by Mr. Marciano, seconded by Mr. Andriozzi.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. Item number seven, superintendent's report. Mr. Gohoe.
Thank you, Dr. Pallata, members of the school committee. So, under item A, I have provided you with three MOAs of the local 920 teachers' union. Due to the upcoming school year and the uniqueness of the COVID situation that we will be facing, it required some flexibility and modifications of conditions temporarily to the teacher's contract. The first MOU is regarding language, regarding leaves of absences as it relates to COVID-19. The second one is an MOU as regards to the conditions under which we will be delivering distance learning. And the third MOU is regarding circumstances that we would, that are pending further discussion, but there are some circumstances where students will not be able to use the cafeteria. It will require additional supervision throughout the school day. And we've engaged the union with an MOU for those situations as well. So I'm asking for approval of those three MOUs.
Move passage.
Second, discussion.
Discussion. Motion by Mr. Marciano. Is there a second to the motion?
I second.
Mrs. Picard, discussion.
I think both Chuck and I, Chuck, do you want to go?
Yeah, you can go first, Gina.
So, my question actually, Ben, I'm going to ask you this question. So my understanding with the Family First Act and the CARES Act is that it already includes the ability to be able to not have to use your sick time if you're quarantined or sick. So why would we need to have an MOA?
Well, the need for the MOA is to provide the union with the assurance and ultimately the explanation that they can give to their members and give them opportunity to participate in it. So it doesn't hurt us, the language.
So it's like there was an extra exercise for you?
Excuse me?
It was a legal exercise?
It was to provide the union with comfort. The union, for all three of these MOAs, were really helpful and instrumental and cooperative. I think their point of view was they would like some comfort language to make sure that they can hand something to their members. And that will provide them with kind of a path forward rather than relying on the language of the statute. But you're right, this does pretty much track the language and the rights that people have under the statute. So I don't see us as being much of a give. It's more of a clarification.
No, that's what was my point. Like, I wasn't sure why we would need the MOA if the CARES Act and the Family First Acts basically say what this says, but I'm fine with passing it. Just was curious why the, sort of like, the double need.
Yep. That was the logic behind it.
So as long as Mike feels, that's very important to me, that Mr. Sisarone, you know, feels very good about what we do. As long as he's happy, I'm happy.
Ben, thank you for the comments.
Thank you. Mr. Pollak had a question?
Yeah, from Mr. Gohoe, I just have a question. I know, you know, obviously, discussed distance learning. But I'm just curious, everything I've been reading about the state inspecting ventilation systems, exhaust systems in the schools, I'm just curious where we stand on that.
That's a good question. As you know, that's been a very prominent topic in the news. And I have to say, I'm very comfortable with the circumstances that we have in North Providence. We've initiated a lot of work in this area to look at our HVAC systems, our ventilation systems, the provision of outdoor air ventilation into buildings. We are cleaning our filters, making sure everything is up and running and repair in a good working order. We are upgrading our filters to HEPA filters. We are providing portable HEPA filters to all schools and pretty much most of our classrooms. We've purchased a significant number of boxed fans. You know, oh, we are, we have contracted with a company to audit all of our schools, and they've begun that process. And I'm very happy to report that we are in, we are in good shape in North Providence. As you know, we have, we have some brand, we have some brand new schools. But also, as part of that bond and as part of the work that the school committee has initiated over the last couple of years, you have upgraded the HVAC systems in other schools as well. So we have new roof units at the high school, the two middle schools. The units at the, at all of the elementary schools can provide what we need to have done. And we're taking the extra step of purchasing portable HEPA filters, portable box fans. All of our windows are in good working order. The school committee, over the last few years, as you know, has replaced the windows in many of our schools. So the big issue is, is air circulation, ventilation, circulation of interior air, providing exterior air, making sure that our exchange systems are able to pump in fresh air and also remove air, and our HVAC systems have the capacity to do that. A lot of school districts are grappling with the inability of their outdated HVAC systems to be able to do this. That's not the case in North Providence. One thing that I'm really happy about, that I would like to inform the committee, one extra step that we are taking, which isn't really too expensive of a step, but it really is crucial, and that is, we are installing UV light bulbs into the ductwork of all of the HVAC systems in all of our schools. So essentially, what happens is a hole is drilled into the ductwork. A cylinder-like UV light is then put into the ductwork, and an electrical outlet is installed nearby near the UV light bulb. And all the science is saying right now that the UV light kills germs and viruses and all the particles that would be, you know, potentially dangerous. At least, you know, to a 99.9% capability. At least that's what HEPA filters are able to do as well. So the fact that we're putting those UV lights in all of the ductwork in all of the schools, in addition to the fact that all of our HVAC units are in really good working order and have the capacity to meet the recommendations that you have read about from Dr. Bromage and the medical experts at RIDE, and the fact that we have contracted with an outside expert in air circulation for buildings, anything else that we have to do further, we will, you know, we will know about. I do anticipate that there may be some things that we would probably have to do to mitigate conditions in the winter, but I'm really comfortable with where we stand right now. So thank you for that question, Mr. Pollak.
Mr. Marciano.
Yeah, Joe, I think the state got a billion dollars pertaining to the virus. The money we have spent in addition to, because we did a lot of this work, you know, ahead of time, not in anticipation of the virus, but we did a lot of work before all this. But the additional work that we have to do because of the virus, when do you expect some reimbursement on that from the state?
So, there are two pools of money, is what the governor is saying, but really, one pool of money supplants state aid for the fourth quarter. There is a pool of money that is, she said that, you know, $50 million has been made available to schools. Well, that's for the entire state, not $50 million per school district. And it's divided up by a formula. So it's for one-time COVID-related, unbudgeted expenses that can be sustained going forward. And that money has to be spent by December 31st. So we have that pool of money. And there is also a pool of money called the ESSER funds, but as I said, that kind of supplanted state aid. But there is an additional pool of money that went beyond state aid. And so we have submitted our application. The governor has said, you know, for any costs that districts have, submit the application and we will get you the money. That's what she said in her last, one of her last press conferences. So we have submitted our application. We will continue to do so as we incur expenses. We're making sure that we're coding everything that we have to do that's COVID-related with a special code, so it's easy to track and then account for. So as far as when the state is going to release that money, they haven't, they haven't told us, but the governor has indicated it'll be a quick turnaround once applications are received.
Thank you.
And I will definitely keep the school committee informed if we run into any complications with the financing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Just a couple of comments. Mr. Gohoe, I just want to thank you for your constant transparency and updating of the community regarding the virus. I think it's critically important that the community stay well-informed, and you have been doing that. Thank you very much. The other, the other comment is, I would like to have a sign-off by a certified HVAC person and/or engineer that the air filtration systems are in place and working properly. So if you can get that from Mr. Feroli and/or anyone else that is certified, I think it's critically important that we show the community that we do have that signature and certification by a qualified individual.
So should we ask, I mean, typically, that's in the form of a motion, because one member can't write requests? So I don't know if typically the chair would move himself from the seat, give the vice chair the reins to make the motion, unless you want one of us to make the motion?
I'm okay with that, if somebody wants to make the motion. I'll put that in the form of a motion. Okay, I'll second it, Gina. All right. The motion by Mrs. Picard, seconded by Mr. Pollak, relative to obtaining a certified signature for our air filtration systems, either by an HVAC person and/or engineer. Any questions on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. Thank you. Next item, item B.
Moving on to the Assistant Superintendent Report. Frank, somebody? Did you guys vote on the MOAs?
No, they didn't.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No.
I apologize, that's my fault. We need a motion for the three MOAs.
We already have the motions. We already have the motions, Mr. Marciano and Mrs. Picard.
Okay. Any questions on the MOAs? Any further questions? Okay, thank you. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. Item B.
Yes, I'd like to turn the mic over to Assistant Superintendent Mrs. Seitzinger, who has been working very hard with her PD team and the building principals regarding the upcoming Teacher Orientation Day and Professional Development Day that we have September 2nd and September 3rd, as well as some other items. Mrs. Seitzinger?
Thank you, Superintendent Gohoe, Chairman Pallata, and good evening to all the school committee members. So a few updates, and you have my update in your packets. Transportation letters were sent out to all bus-eligible students, and we've received a lot of information from those families, and a lot of people are opting out of actually taking the bus. And now that the situation has been revised in terms of bus capacity, it's to 50%, we are able to transport our students to and from schools each day. In addition, as you know, we sent out a distance learning form. Approximately as of today, I think it was 1,020, so about 30% of our students are opting for full distance learning across the district K to 12. So we'll have plenty of room in our classrooms, we're hoping, so we'll be able to physically distance the students and have the spacing needs that we, we are required to by the guidance. Our district reentry plan was sent in July, as you know. We received our feedback from RIDE, and we responded accordingly, based on the current RIDO playbooks, and we've also updated that. Superintendent Gohoe led a forum for families, as you know, on August 5th with our administrative team, and received a great deal of positive feedback from his communication and response, and we're happy to support that. And also, we had a staff forum on August 19th, which again, Superintendent Gohoe led, and we were able to respond to many questions that the staff had at that time. In addition, we're working with teachers and staff and principals on typical schedules, planning frameworks, resources and expectations. And now that we have these MOAs, we can really work on that with the union leadership. And I want to thank Mike Sisarone for his support along the way in all of these endeavors. We're also working with our legal counsel, and I just got a draft of it today, on a distance learning waiver form, so just letting parents know what our expectations are for students, parents, and ourselves. And through Skyward, we have a self-screening health and wellness check for both staff and students. So it's really simple and practical. It's no additional cost to the district, it's through Skyward. I'll be explaining that and showing that to teachers and staff, and also to families through a newsletter that I'm going to send out for parents and staff regarding social distancing, mask-wearing, hand washing, and contains a lot of good tips for all of that. Want to have a, we have a special announcement for the comprehensive literacy grant. As you know, last time, we, we were looking for a new coach for that curriculum distance learning instructional, instructional coach for our district for elementary as a line to that grant. And Mrs. Capraro, Stephanie Capraro has been selected as that coach, and just want to give you a little bit of her background. She's been in the district 22 years. For the past seven years, she's been a reading specialist at Waylon Elementary School. She's also taught at the elementary and middle school level. She's a Wilson Dyslexia Specialist and Reading Systems Certified Educator. And she's been a teacher leader and facilitator in our district. It's served as facilitating both professional development at the school and district level. She brings a great deal of expertise, as well as a passion for learning in this new, important position. So we're excited to, and welcome her in that role. And we actually had a meeting with our coaches today, so lots of good work is going to be happening, and we're going to be front-loading. We're going to start our pilot for the ELA program for the curriculum in January. So at the beginning of this year, we'll be front-loading with distance learning supports, SEL supports. It's really kind of getting us back into the situation in our learning environments, and really acclimation of the same. So we're really excited about that, and just want to welcome her. So Stephanie's here, so welcome, Stephanie. Congratulations.
Hey.
Yeah, I'm muted. I want to also continue to tell you that our math pilots, Stephanie, go ahead.
All right. Thank you so much. I'm so excited.
Thank you. Our math pilots for the middle school are also going to begin in January, so that again, that we can spend this time on relationship building, community building, SEL, distance learning, and really working on getting people acclimated back to our, you know, our learning environments. As far as professional learning, our first Professional Development Day is September 3rd, and I've outlined some things here as what we're doing at the elementary level. We're partnering with Bradley this year again for the whole entire year. They're going to be working with the elementary teachers and administration on COVID's impact on youth mental health. The Equity Institute will be working with the middle school and high school on different sessions, as I've outlined there. And we're also continuing to partner with Highlander Institute, New England Base Camp, the NRU Counseling Center for future professional learning activities. Our district focuses continues to be on culturally responsive education, instruction, equity, social emotional wellness, and distance learning. We're also continuing as administrative leadership team. We worked with Dr. Paul Ash this past week, and we discussed the current research on the learning gaps in terms of distance learning from the spring. And we're actually focusing on prioritizing our content standards, and we'll be working on that as school-based teams on the 9th, 10th, and 11th at the school-based level. And we've also partnered with the EAB Company, it's Education Technology Services and Research, and that's to support our leadership team in evidence-based practices in our district and schools. And I do want to say that, I'm really proud to say that myself, and Principal Donovan completed the NISIL leadership training, and Gina, thanks via facilitation of that. And now it's called the National Center for Educational, on educational economy. But I wanted to say that that did not go, you know, we are going to bring that forward to our team and to our teachers, that great research, and I'm really proud of that. And it was an outstanding experience. So I want to thank you for that and for helping us get on board with that. One more thing, in terms of social-emotional supports, I wanted to let the school committee know that with myself and Special Ed Director Van Avery, we've been working with our social workers, and we asked them to develop a self-regul, self-regulation, self-awareness tool for students in K to 8. And what that means is kids will check in with their teachers every morning, and they developed a simple Google form, which is very visual, and it asks them, like, how are you feeling today? How are you doing? But not only that, it gives them basic strategies in terms of tools that they can use as students and learn and with their teachers and work on every day. So those are really important life skills, and as we know, we have to be aware of how kids are feeling emotionally, especially post-COVID in this situation. And, you know, we're all feeling stressed and anxious, and we need to understand that we need to support our students that way before they can really learn the academics. So we're really excited about that. I met with them today. They are very excited about the whole process. So that's going to be shared at our orientations at the school level with all teachers. And that will provide great data for the teacher, that could provide great data for the principals, and we're also going to work on something for the high school that will be more developmentally appropriate for high school students. That would be quick and easy. It's not, it's not a difficult thing for anybody to do. And I also mentioned the NRU, finally, that we're going to be doing some great family workshops with them, that they're going to record, and we'll put those on our website as well. So that will be a partnership for the whole year on things like anxiety and other things that are of interest to our parents via the surveys that we've taken. And that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Seitzinger. I do want to thank you and your team and the building principals for keeping the teaching and learning train moving, for focusing on identifying and remediating learning gaps that students may demonstrate when they return, also for focusing on social-emotional learning, not only of our students and our staff, but the needs and the anxiety that they will present, having been detached from school for six months, and then really returning to school under very difficult circumstances and different circumstances. So the fact that we have partnered with community agencies and have a plan for those social-emotional needs is very timely as well, and also very timely in our society, which this work was begun months ago before many of the issues that we've seen occur globally, but the continued emphasis on equity and access for all kids in a culturally responsive school system. So thank you for keeping those trains moving and the work that you've done with Ms. Van Avery and the building principals. So the next item, I'm going to ask Mrs. Van Avery to also give us an update regarding the support being put in place for our special education and our high-needs students. Mrs. Van, Mrs. Van Avery?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gohoe, Dr. Pallata, and school committee members. So before I give a recap on special education, what we did this summer, and where we're headed this fall, I wanted to publicly thank Assistant Superintendent Seitzinger, as well as our HR Director Kathy Goet for continuing to be champions behind the scenes for all of our faculty and students in North Providence. So they continue to challenge me as the special ed director and think outside of the box. And they are the first ones to offer assistance, and they tried to kick me out of my office tonight, but I am still here at central office. So I'm just so appreciative of them as being phenomenal team members. So as you can imagine, this summer has been challenging. We've had a summer full of troubleshooting, as well as problem solving. And so we provided IEP summer services to approximately 136 students virtually. OT, speech, PT, special education, you name it, we provided it. We also surveyed all of our families at the end of our summer programming, and out of them, we received 70 responses that they found the program in the summer to be very enjoyable and educational for their students. So at the end of the day, we met all IEP goals and provided services to these students. So I am grateful to the summer faculty who created successful virtual environments for all of our students. So as we look to start the new school year, our focus will be on continuing to provide the best IEP services, whether we are in person or virtually. I have spent a lot of time this summer crying with families as they are struggling to make decisions on whether to keep their students, their sons and daughters, home virtually or to return them back to our buildings. I have spent majority of this summer answering parent emails, answering phone calls, troubleshooting inclusion, and what does that look like for least restrictive environments? We have looked at faculty schedules and the impacts of these pods, and how that impacts special education. This week, we also received additional guidance from the Department of Ed on our differently-abled students, which provided additional clarification on meeting IEP goals, services, et cetera. Another large component to the summer has been working alongside of our nurses, who are prepping and preparing to meet the safety and health needs of our students. Our PPE supplies have come in, yay, and we will be disseminating, disseminating them out to our schools this week. And finally, I am working alongside my director colleagues across the state to revise a series of protocols that we all have in terms of physical restraints, how we host and hold IEP team meetings and evaluations, how we define inclusion in least restrictive environment. We are also continuing to outreach, ah, Ms. Picard can help us as well. We are also continuing to outreach for a North Providence Special Education Local Advisory Chair. So I have many conversations with many parents who are nervous about taking on the chair role. So this is my plug. If there's any parents on here, if any of you want to encourage a parent to reach out to me, we are still looking for a chair for this upcoming school year. And again, we are all working very hard. The special educators, the related service providers have been in constant contact with me all summer with ideas and prep for what they can do to provide services to the best of their abilities this fall, whether we are in person or virtually. Thank you, Superintendent Gohoe.
Thank you, Ms. Van Avery. I do appreciate everything, and I know our students and families do as well. That concludes the superintendent's report. Dr. Pallata?
Thank you, Mr. Gohoe, and thank you, Mrs. Seitzinger, and thank you, Mrs. Van Avery. Does any committee members have any questions or comments?
I have one.
Mr. Andriozzi?
Okay.
I think it's Rod DeSova.
Oh, Mr. DeSova, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Just a quick question. Seeing that we've been out of, you know, one-third of the last school year, especially at the elementary level, was, you know, distance learning. So I'm wondering what we're doing with the curriculum in terms of compacting as we, as we come back, especially in the language arts and the math areas? So I guess that's a question from Mrs. Seitzinger. Thank you.
Yeah, so as I said, that's exactly what we're doing, Rod, and we understand that research, as you said, and I said, it's really, there's a huge learning loss. And that's what we worked on with Dr. Paul Ash, but we're at the building level on our content level, our grade-level teams, content teams at the middle school level, and certainly at the department level at the high school. That's exactly what we're working on. We're creating action plans around that, and we're going to cut, you know, say, compact it, but we're going to look at what are the priority standards? And there are several different ways to do that, and I think what we're going to do mainly is weed out, you know, weed out what we don't need, and think about what we really, what's going to have the greatest impact. But, you know, as, as you said, there's been huge loss of learning. So we have to start that way. We have to start looking at our curriculum, and some of that was done last spring, I think, not to the degree that we're really, like, structuring it so much right now, but I think some of that was done at certain, at the certain school, at school level. But there was just so much, I think, that was put upon teachers and administrators at that time, as you know. And, you know, I think we learned a lot from that experience, and I really, we all listened to the feedback that we received from the parents and certainly, and from the students. I think the feedback we received from the students was so valuable, and I really, I mean, we all appreciated that. But for me, as a teacher and as a mom, and as, you know, I just, in this position, I really take that seriously, to really make sure we have students' voice and the teacher's voice and our parents' voice. So we really, we're going to really do our best to make sure we fill in those gaps So we really, we're going to really do our best to make sure we fill in those gaps and improve achievement. So it's very serious, and it's a great question.
That's a great answer. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments before we get off this subject. This could be potentially our last monthly meeting before a final decision is made by RIDE in terms of start or reopening of the school year. I just want to thank everyone involved, and certainly considering the mental health of all the students, I think that's critically important. And I'm sure at some point, you know, there'll be strong consideration given to, to the adults involved in education relative to supporting mental health. The other, the other issue is, I believe, and I'll stand corrected, Mr. Gojo, but are masks currently mandated?
Yes, and as part of the dialogue from Dr. Bromage, he did stress, I did participate in a meeting with him today, number of superintendents, the commissioner and Dr. Alexander Scott. Masks and distance are still the two primary mitigators of the virus. So two people wearing adults and staying three to six feet away from them, from each other, definitely six feet away from each other whenever possible are the two greatest mitigators. But yes, masks are mandatory.
Okay, so if the masks are mandatory, are there associated penalties if the masks are not worn?
Well, no. In the RIDE guidance, it explicitly states that there can be no penalty. So, you know, what we will do is we'll try to work on a case-by-case basis with students. Obviously, there will be students with medical conditions who may not be able to wear a mask, and there may be students who they and their families are not comfortable wearing the mask for whatever reason. So we will try to work with those situations on a case-by-case basis, and maybe those families, you know, might be, might be better candidates for the virtual model.
Okay, thank you for that. So given, given the decision by the governor and her task force relative to school reopening, assuming school reopens in any capacity, I have not heard a lot of discussion or have read anything relative to liability in terms of kids getting sick or teachers getting sick and the possibility of taking that virus home and infecting someone else. And maybe, maybe this is a question for, for our attorney, Mr. Scunjo, but have you seen or heard or read anything relative to the whole issue of liability with the reopening of schools and the infection?
I'll turn this over to Ben, but let me just say quickly, I know that it was expected that by now Congress would have acted on a second stimulus, and I know that liability discussion for schools and businesses was supposed to be at the forefront of that stimulus, and as you know, it has not happened. Ben?
Attorney Gojo explained it perfectly.
I just want to caution us that we're in, we're still in the business matters, which we have to be thoughtful about the dialogue that we have for the open meeting floor during this section.
What are you specifically referring to, Mrs. Picard? Mrs. Sightzinger spoke about the reentry plan.
Right. Correct. She talked about the teaching and learning piece? Absolutely. I just want to be mindful of this. There's not supposed to be much discussion during this section. I don't know if you want to correct me if I'm wrong, but that's my understanding.
Well, during Mrs. Sightzinger's presentation, it was a district reentry plan. You don't think it comes under that?
It's just that this is not, this part of the agenda is not supposed to be, we're not supposed to be able to have the discussion because it's under reports.
No, we can have a discussion. We can't have a vote.
That's correct. We can't have a vote. We can't have a discussion. Any further discussion on that? So if, if Congress does not act and we return to school, liability would be an open issue. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, item eight, any school committee reports. Item nine, old business. We have none. Item 10, discussion of school improvement teams.
Yes, Mrs. Picard asked that that be put on the agenda, so I will defer to her on this one.
Thank you, Superintendent Gojo. So this is on the agenda. We had passed and finalized our policy in February, so I just wanted to sort of highlight first that moving forward, as I know everyone is very caught up in the reopening of school, I want to make sure that we're thoughtful about our next steps. At our October meeting, we will have a role in reviewing all the school improvement teams. Our policy talks about that with the first 30 days of school year, that the school improvement team elections must be held. So I just want to make sure, and I had a conversation with Mr. Gojo, that he is, he is right on it, but I just wanted to make sure as a school committee that we're aware as our parents are, and I think I'm going to use what Louise had said earlier as a leverage, that the feedback we get from students and parents has been very crucial. I think we've all seen that, and this is just another way that that's going to be impacted with the new legislation. There will need to be a balance. They will need to be elected. Our charge will be to review the demographics. I've asked Mr. Gojo for the October meeting to make sure that we have the demographics because with the changes in our neighborhood schools, those look different than what's shown on the RIDE accountability data. So we will need to have that on our October agenda to review. And, but basically, that there'll be a regular meeting schedule. We should, the expectations would be that we would initially transparent, that they're posted, right? It would be easy access for parents to see what the election procedures will be, and that's determined by the principal, that we only require that it's the first 30 days, that there be a balance, that parents and community members cannot be employees of the school district, and that there are definitely members who are, have a voice. There should be minutes kept because they have to have a quorum. It talks about the 50% in order to make a vote. So I just want to make, there's lots of things that are different for our administrators and our school improvement teams. So we just probably want to make sure, and I know Joe knows this, that everyone understands the expectation, but more importantly, that the parents have the transparency, that it's easy access to find the meeting schedules, who's on the team, what their roles will be once this is up and running. So that was really more sort of highlight that in October, that will be part of our role as a school committee.
Thank you. Let me just say that Attorney Scunjo did a training of our administrators on the new education reform law, which was very helpful. And then we have an upcoming administrator meeting, and on that agenda, the school improvement team policy has been placed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Picard. Thank you, Mr. Gojo. Item B on the new business, discussion approval of Chromebook lease agreement. Mr. Gojo, you want to speak to that?
Yes, as you know, the school committee approved the purchase of Chromebook leases to enable our district to go one-to-one in terms of virtual learning, which will be an experience for all of our students this upcoming year. And so we thought that it would be appropriate for the school committee to formally approve the actual lease, so I would request your approval.
Oof, passage.
Move by Mr. Marciano.
Second.
I'll second with discussion.
Second by Mr. Pollak. Discussion, Mr. Pollak.
Yeah, I just have a question for Mr. Nahijian. Ralph, if you could unmute yourself.
Yes, sir.
Your team did an amazing job with the distribution of the Chromebooks, you know, a few months back when this COVID started. It was kind of very congested. I know everything happened last minute. I was just wondering what the plans would be to get the Chromebooks distributed and obviously ease up congestion. Are they going to do it by school by school or how, you know, do you have any tentative plans at this point?
So right now, yes, we have a tentative schedule in place. It will be distributed through the principals. We just, we keep getting an updated list from the data manager, Lisa Valea, who is giving us a list daily of who is registered to do distance learning. So we are cross-referencing all those students now with whether or not they were already issued a Chromebook in March. So if they have one, we're just going to assign them as a distance learner and not an in-schooler. And then anyone else who is a distance learner that has not been issued will be the first to be issued the round of Chromebooks. We do not have the 2,000 in hand yet. We're expected today, I keep calling him every single day, he actually called me first today to say that he got word that it should be the second week of September that we get them. When we get them and every kid that needs one, it'll go to their principal. The principal will distribute those, and a form will go out, which will ask them if they've read and understood the Chromebook usage expectation document, and if they've read and understood the North Providence School District Responsibility Agreement for the Chromebook, and also whether or not they receive the option to purchase their own insurance so they don't have to pay it outright. And if I may follow up to Gina Picard's, a couple of months ago when we talked about the insurance, I did spend a lot of time going out and trying to find multiple companies besides what other districts are paying, and so far, I think we got the best deal through the trust. The one year will be $19, and that is with us maintaining the repairs, not the parent, and that's a one-year fee for, that included theft. I believe, Dr. Pallada, you had mentioned about whether or not it would include theft. It includes theft, fire, flood, vandalism, broken screens and everything, so it's fully covered, and it's only $19 a year. The window for that, we already had open, but then when the governor changed the timeframe, the insurance company is providing us with a new form to send out that'll change the open enrollment form. So they're basically going to have the second week of September through the end of March to purchase the insurance.
I have a question. Question?
Yes, sir.
So I'm the guy that asked you about the insurance to begin with, which is fine. Secondly, is that $19 per unit?
Yes, per unit, $19, yes, for one year.
$19 per unit. So it's $38,000 for the 2,000 units.
For those 2,000, yes. However, we're going to give this opportunity to all the kids, even the ones that are in school, because they're going to be assigning their own Chromebook. So technically, it would be 30, it would be about 3,800, 3,900 units.
So it'll double to, it'll double to $76,000.
Yes, that's correct.
So now the lease became, instead of 152, the lease became 220 per year.
No, the insurance is the responsibility of the, it's not the responsibility, it's the option of the parent.
Okay.
If they don't, if they choose not to take the insurance, then they are held just responsible to pay for the damage of the Chromebook if it's damaged or stolen or lost.
So who collects the $19? We do?
Nope, that goes directly, there's, there's an online portal for our school that'll be on our website that they click on, and they do it all right through the insurance company.
So at some point in time, we'll know how many of these 2,000 new ones are insured and how many are not.
Correct.
And then at that point, the people that have them will be liable for, if there's a loss of theft, breakage, they'll be liable?
Yes, they'll be, they'll be liable. However, the cost of the repairs will be done by us, our tech team. So it is pretty reasonable. I think now, I mean, we currently do this now if they're intentionally damaged by a student in school. If a student throws it on the floor, breaks the screen, the parents are responsible. The principals ensure that, that we send them basically a bill with no labor, just the cost of the screen, and I think we're paying about $36 for a screen. So that's what it costs right now for a parent if they were to say break the screen.
And we have somebody that, that watches, that, that collects that?
Yeah, the principals collect it. They turn it into Mary Reed at the finance office. That check has to be received by her before we physically fix the Chromebook.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so there's a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, item 11, approval of bills, and you should have that additional bill that was sent to you from Lowe's. Chair, entertain a motion.
Don't move.
Motion by Mr. Marciano.
Second.
Second by Mr. Corsini. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
I got a quick, yeah, quick question. I know we've been dealing with the trust for many years. Have we ever, how many school districts belong to the trust? Does anyone know? I think Ben knows. He deals with them a lot. Ben, do you know how many school districts belong to the trust?
I believe, well, it varies between a third and one-half, depending on the kind of insurance that you look at, and it's the same for the municipalities.
You know, it seems to bother me sometimes when we get a report and Joe lets us know that, that, you know, the trust isn't going to cover this or cover that or whatever. Are there a lot of exclusions in the policy? Is that it? Or?
There are a lot of exclusions, exclusions in the policy. I want to say, two or three superintendents ago, we actually had an analysis on their insurance policies versus the kind of commercial policy that you can get out there. And the conclusion was that their insurance policy essentially was the highest form of insurance that you can get. So we have to remember they're created by the General Assembly as an insurance cooperative specifically to represent school districts and municipalities, and General Assembly-created organizations. They're not a for-profit organization.
Right. Yeah, I just, when I, that $136,000 number jumped out at me, and I was just wondering, so about a third of the school districts belong to the trust?
It's a third to a half, and the reason why I say that is I know they offer different kind of products, and different districts take advantage of those products, like workers' compensation, liability.
And is your review of the policy, it's in line with most companies as far as exclusions are concerned?
Well, I haven't reviewed it, probably in about four or five years. So we could look into that if you want to.
Yeah, could you take a look at that?
Absolutely. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, there was a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item 12, use of property. We have one, one request. Chair, entertain a motion.
Oof, passage.
Mr. Marciano, seconded by?
Second.
Mr. De Silva and Ms. Andrew Ozzy. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. We have no requests to address the committee. We have no pending business. Before we adjourn, I just want to wish the administration and the faculty and all the educators involved the best of luck with the reopening. Stay safe, everyone. Do the best that you can under the current conditions. Hopefully, we will get through this, and everybody will come out on, on the good side. So stay safe, everyone, and thank you. Chair, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Don't move.
Marciano, seconded by? Seconded by?
I'll second it.
Andrew Ozzy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Good night, everybody.
Good night. Good night.